All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call our meeting to order. Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the final agenda?
Motion to adopt the final agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Cross. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. The motion carries. Our next order of business is to adopt the minutes from our October 7, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Eric. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We'll now move on to our discussion items, and our first item for discussion tonight is item 3.1, Consider a Final Platte and Final PUD Rezoning for West Creek Village First Edition. This item does include a public hearing. So after our staff presentation, I'll open the public hearing for those in chambers wishing to speak on this request, and anyone wishing to do so will be given three minutes to speak, and then we'll kindly ask anyone else who wishes to speak who also have thirty, uh, three minutes until everyone who wishes to speak on this topic has an opportunity to do so. We'll then ask the Planning Commission for a motion to close the public hearing, and then the Planning Commission will have an opportunity to discuss the proposal. Let me now turn it over to City Planner Brian McCann to make a staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, we are looking at the final platte and final PUD rezoning for the West Creek Village First Edition Platte from Lennar. So just an overview of our major subdivision plating process, the third and final step is the final platte, which you are considering this evening, where we review the final details of a development and bring forward a development agreement to council for consideration. So we are in the last step of our formal review here for land use. So previous reviews, they had a sketch platte proposal that was different from the one you had most recently seen. That sketch went back in summer of 2024. They ultimately came back with a revised sketch platte earlier this year, back in March, and received their preliminary platte approvals this past June. So as I mentioned, the first, uh, the two applications they are requesting this evening are the final platte and the final rezoning. For the location and area, it's two parcels here highlighted in blue, about eighty-nine acres in size. They're located north of County Road 10, Angler Boulevard, west of Creekside Lane, and the Marsh Hollow Development, as well as the Hunters Brook Creekside Development, and south of the Marsh Lake Hunt Club. Also, Twin Cities Western Railroad bisects the site, which you can see here, splitting it there. In total, the development is for fifty single-family homes, eighteen twin homes, and fifty-six townhomes, but this first edition will consist of only the fifty-six townhomes and thirteen of the fifty single-family homes. The remainder of that development will come in future phases. For the existing conditions of the site, it's generally flat vacant farmland with some wetlands shown in the colored areas on the screen. There is also a portion of West Chaska Creek to the north, and then also of note, there is a XL Energy transmission lines and easement that run through the south side of the property. So here is the final platte. I highlighted the fifty-six townhomes in red, then the single-family homes in green here, and then these areas in yellow are their future development areas where they will have the twin homes and remaining single-family homes in these areas in yellow. The areas in blue are open space, wetlands, stormwater ponds, all the open space areas throughout the development. So you can see a very significant portion of it will not be built upon, and then the roads and the park and trail shown in purple. So our comprehensive plan was recently amended for this development. You may recall in the image on the left, there was some more medium density in the orange area. That was modified to match with the single-family area proposed with the development, and then also the incorporation of the conservation residential area for those larger acreage lots. So that was approved by the Metropolitan, Metropolitan Council, and we've now incorporated that into our current comp plan. So for annexation and rezoning, the annexation was also approved, so this is formally within the city of Victoria boundaries. Upon annexation, they received an agricultural zoning, so that's part of the request that they're here for tonight. They are seeking the final PUD amendment or PUD ordinance for the R1 single-family areas and the R3 twin homes and townhomes. So as you know, our planned development process is to allow innovative, creative, and flexible development processes. Initially, provided input on at sketch platte, the details are finalized during preliminary platte, and then here tonight, you are looking at recommending the ordinance for adoption with the final platte. So these are the deviations that are presented with their application, some changes from preliminary platte that I'll note. They've raised the eight-feet side yard setback up to ten to match our current side yard setback, and then it was discovered that the townhomes would not meet the patio setback requirements on their proposed rendering, so they've proposed to decrease those from ten feet to six feet for the rear, and then from five feet to two feet for the sides. Everything else is as was proposed when you approved the preliminary platte. So for lighting and signage, that remains consistent in the plans as well for this area. I noted the streetlights in red throughout the townhome and the thirteen single-family home area, as well as a proposed monument signage location that we'll review more closely with the building permit. And then also highlighting the on-street parking that they have available for the townhomes, that remains consistent, as well with thirty-one on-street stalls, and then based on the renderings that were reviewed at preliminary platte, they're meeting the minimum parking requirements for the single-family and townhomes as well. Again, pedestrian connections remain the same as the last time that you saw them, with sidewalks noted in purple here for the townhome area with the extension of Creekside Lane. They're also showing that trail on the south side, and then with future development, we'll also see that trail connection to Marsh, Marsh Hollow to the east as well. Regarding landscaping, this phase of the development meets all our requirements regarding boulevard tree types and spacings, the minimum number of plantings required per lot, the minimum requirement of open space, as I highlighted in those blue areas on the final platte, and they have also indicated that they will be adding foundation plantings to the townhomes. And then for park dedication, they are showing that Outlot C here, a little over a third of an acre for a community park, and then also those trails that I mentioned would also count towards Parkland Dedication Credits. So their remaining requirement comes out to 1.765 acres, or about 185,000 in Parkland Dedication Fees. Then for grading and stormwater management, pretty typical, they have to meet the CCWMO rules. They have to put wetlands and buffers and outlots that are deeded to the city, and that the stormwater facilities that they put in place should have access so that our Public Works team can efficiently maintain them. Excuse me. Then for the site utilities, those will be extended from Creekside Lane to the east. New information for the group, well, number six has been completed and permitted for pumping by the DNR, so that was a, a big move as we look towards our south growth area for more development. So you'll note, I had a condition that I struck from this. And then just a general note from the group, we don't anticipate a wire treatment plant coming with this development, but we do need to keep in mind that we are looking for a future Area 4-1 out in this south growth. So for the public hearing, this was published in the Waconia Patriot on November 6. We mailed to property owners within 350 feet of the development. I just have a note that state statute does not require notification for rental units. We also posted it online and at City Hall. We did receive two complaints from the neighboring development regarding noise and traffic. They have a early grading agreement that the city council approved, so there is some work being done out there right now. If you've drove on Angler Boulevard, you've seen it. They've been doing some work, so there were some concerns regarding noise, traffic, and also improper notification of the Marsh Hollow development. So with that, I have some suggested conditions of approval on the screen. You'll see I struck number seven with that requirement for the well to be established before installation of landscaping. Otherwise, all our conditions are pretty boilerplate, except eight and nine. We would like a copy of the executed easement agreement with XL Energy for improvements within their transmission easements, and then any future tree removals of the custom graded lots were not considered with tree preservation requirements, so those will need to be mitigated with future phases as well. With that, I have a sample motion for you on the screen, and a representative of the applications in the audience this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers this evening who wishes to speak to this item? Please. Yep, and I'd ask anyone who wishes to speak to provide your name and address, please, and I'll keep time.
I'm just gonna go ahead and read it for simplicity.
Sure, that's fine.
My name is Molly Coleman. I am at 10555 Robinwood Road. I am here tonight because actions taken during the early grading phase of West Creek Village have caused ongoing and significant disruption and harm at my property, and because those actions appear to have violated both city ordinances and state environmental requirements. As of this morning, a MERA action has been formally accepted and filed in Carver County District Court concerning this project. That filing raises issues, including pre-permit land disturbing activity, failure to provide required occupant notice under City Code Section 1130040, and ongoing grading agreement violations, including hours of operation and access route restrictions. I am not asking this commission to litigate those issues tonight. I am simply asking you not to advance final approval while these matters are now before the court and state agencies. Approving a final platte while a MERA action and TRO request are pending would create procedural and legal complications, especially if injunctive relief is granted. I respectfully request that the commission pause action on this item until the environmental and procedural concerns raised in the filed case are addressed and resolved.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. I would just note for the record that we do not sit tonight as a Board of Adjustment and Appeals. We are simply an advisory body that listens and gives input as citizens to the city council, who ultimately makes the decision on these matters. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? No? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. The motion carries, and the public hearing is now closed. I'll now open the floor for the Planning Commission to discuss. Commissioners, any questions or concerns about this project? I have one. I actually have a couple. I know that at the preliminary platte review, a sketch platte review, the deviations were in place, but I do tend to agree with Council Member Ivansky that this does feel a little bit like a race to the bottom for me, with deviations of fifty-three percent on the minimum lot area for the R1 project and forty percent for the R3. That is quite a significant deviation in, in lot size. Same with the impervious standard, which goes to fifty-five percent for the non-shorland area. So I, I do have that reservation, and I'm concerned about it. It feels to me like they're, like Lennar is wedging a lot of properties in. I know it helps us when it comes to the density requirements, but on the other hand, it does, to some extent, lower the bar for, for development in this area. So that, that's one concern that I have.
Before we go off of that, Brian, how far off are these from other PUDs that have been approved?
Chair and Councilmember Cross, they're not too far off from some of the most recent developments that we've approved. For example, the Hunters Brook Development and the Marsh Hollow Development have somewhat similar lot sizes and whis. I will note that these are the absolute minimums. I think Josh Metzer with Lennar touched on it preliminary platte, but these are the absolute minimums. There may only be one or two lots throughout this entire development that actually have 5,672 square feet. I don't know if Josh would like to speak on that more, but he is in the audience this evening as well.
Before Josh talks, I mean, I do agree with the chair, and I think we've brought this up before, that we continue to see PUDs that are drastically different than what R1 is, and I would urge city council to, and, and the team to consider, what can we do? Because if all we're gonna do is continue to deviate from what the standard is, why do we have a standard?
That's a fair point.
Well, we'd recommend to deny it then. That's what we do.
But we don't, because we want the, the city to continue to develop and grow, so then there has to be a happy medium. And the rest of our neighboring cities are not this far off, right? Like, they're closer to these fives and sixes. So I, I don't know the answer. I don't see you like sit here and pretend to know what the right thing is, but I don't think I've been on this. I've been on this for two or three years now. We've approved anything that's met the 12,000 square foot. I can't think of one.
When it came up before, though, I don't know that we pushed back hard.
No, we never have.
As we should have if we.
Correct.
Considering it to be.
I just, we're at this point where everything's a PUD. It's like, okay, well, that's, I mean, that's a, that's a global problem in Minnesota in general. It's not just Victoria, but like, we need to address it. We can be leaders in the community and figure out a way to make it agreeable for all parties, the developers, the community, the city, to make it the right way. That's what I'm urging.
In.
Off my horse.
Well, part of that is, most of the land is being annexed, so it starts off, you know, where it's not land within the community that was R1, you know, before and was known. So it, it.
It's part of it.
I, I know how it's happening. I'm participating in it.
Good evening. Josh Metzer with Lennar, Minnesota. We're out of the Plymouth office. Yeah, I guess I would disagree that we're lowering the bar. I think the, the bar has been set before this application in the area with Marsh Hollow, Hunters Brook, Hunters Brook Creekside, Victoria Ridge. Those all had deviations. I had a whole table full of them listed in our narrative for the preliminary platte. We went over that, you know, at length through our pre-platte and concept plan. So we do have some deviations from code, but it's, we have some that are less deviations than those neighborhoods I, I referenced. We have some that are more. So I think the bar has been set. I don't think we're lowering it. Also, I'll remind you that this property, before we re-guided it, sixty percent of the land was guided for medium density. With our proposed plan, that was revised down to thirty-six percent medium density. The rest was converted to lower density. So I think it's subjective on, on what's lowering the bar and then what's going below standard, you know. We could have kept that sixty percent and had it all attached townhomes with zero setback and much smaller lots than 5,000 and change what we're proposing. But that's, you know, really all I'll say about that. We're happy to be here at this stage. We've been working on this one for a long time. So this is the first of two plattes that we're gonna be bringing forward. The next platte would be ideally next year with the balance of the twin homes and balance of the single-family homes. Grading is underway, as mentioned. It's, we have quite a bit of import that has to come in, so there has been a, a fair number of trucks coming in with, with material. But once the, the material has been brought in, from there on, it's, it's street utility construction and then construction of homes.
Very good. Thanks. While you're at the podium, Josh, I do have a question about parking as well. I know that you've got a visitor area, or a couple of different visitor areas that are shown here. In the packet, there was mentioned that there, the, will be, that the renderings include driveway space for parking as well. In my HOA, we don't allow driveway parking, at least not by the residents. What, do you know what the HOA rules will provide in that respect?
I don't. I don't believe we traditionally prohibit parking in the driveway, but each of these townhome units does have a two-stall garage. There's a driveway that's two-stall with at least twenty-five feet in length, and then we have, I believe it's thirty-one parking stalls, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I maybe misread. I thought it was two spots for fifty percent of the residents and one spot for the other fifty percent.
I think that's code. In code requirement.
I see. But you're exceeding that, and you've got two for each townhome.
Two enclosed.
For.
Call it two on the driveway, and then we have the additional thirty-one off-street.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Commissioners.
In, there was discussion about the trail system and one of them being a preference of the city. There was a comment about that. I'm trying to remember the particular, Brian. You know what I'm referring to?
Oh, yes.
And now would be the time to think about that.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioner, we had made a note about this sidewalk noted in red. I talked to our Public Works Department, and since they're already going to be out here maintaining the trail on the south side of Creekside Lane, they would like this area in red to be upgraded to an eight-foot trail as well.
When you say eight-foot trail, I mean, it's still a sidewalk or?
Yeah, on the north side right now, it's a six-foot sidewalk. Sorry, I should have clarified that. Yeah, so they want it upgraded by two feet to a trail segment. And that's just something to note for the group. This area of the development isn't being considered with this first edition platte. It's just something we should consider for the future.
So is, is, so that sidewalk trail would not be addressed in this platte?
Correct.
At this time?
Correct.
Yes, I'm not super thrilled with the townhomes being cut back so much more. Like, I understand that's kind of in line with what the other communities are at, but I don't think we have a townhouse that's that small of a back, like, side. Yeah, side sets and back sets and.
When you said cut back.
Sorry, rear patio and side patio.
Okay, you're talking about the setbacks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, specifically with the townhouses. Like, I understand the R1 setback, because we do have that standard with other communities that's already been approved, but I, there's not that many townhomes yet, and I'd hate for us to start a standard of, you know, rear back patio setback being six feet and a side of two feet.
Just a general note for the Planning Commission, I want to highlight that some of these changes that you're seeing are reflective of higher density requirements by the Metropolitan Council and development trends that we're seeing throughout the Twin Cities. Our code is a decade old. We're trying to play catch-up, so things look a lot different, but they might not necessarily be that drastic from what's being developed around the Twin Cities currently.
And I'll note for the patio setbacks, that's, that's the first time that I've seen a patio setback standard in the probably thirty-some communities I've worked in, in the Twin Cities here. I believe it was just passed in the last five years, if I'm correct, Brian, something about, something like that. But I did take a look through Victoria at every townhome development I could find on aerial maps and any online approvals through Planning Commission, City Council. I couldn't find one that met the city's new, newly adopted code for setbacks of patios. And it's, it's, you know, it's a townhome. It's, it's a zero setback structure. So to have a patio that's two feet off of that zero setback, the structure, I, I think is, it's absolutely common, and it's, it's the norm. And the, the rear setback line, I mean, we, we could have moved a, a line, but it's, our townhomes are platted so that each individual unit has its own lot, and then outside of that is a even larger common townhome lot that's owned by the, the HOA. So we're well beyond ten feet of a rear setback before you get to a city outlot.
Couple of clarifications. Are the townhomes constructed with patios or?
Yes.
Okay, and so?
Or decks if it's a, if it's a walkout.
Okay, and so it's that depth would take you, instead of ten, six feet from the back setback of that property, if, if we're looking at those. So it's on the backside of those properties, like where that number one is, the lower lap, fourteen?
Correct.
And then the two feet would maybe be looking at twenty-two and twenty-three, how they're very close together? Is that, those are where those situations would arise?
You're not talking about a setback from the, the neighbor. You're talking about a setback from a property.
Side yard?
Yeah, it's a, so it's a side. Yeah, that, I'm trying to see.
Which is a, which is a shared property line.
Right.
They share a wall with the structure. There's typically a privacy fence that's installed in between on the property line.
Yeah, that would be that. Are these patios on grade, or would they typically be more on like the second floor?
So I don't have the grading plan in front of me. I believe some of these are walkout with a basement, so there's a deck on the main level, and the ones that are slab on grade with no, with no basement, they'll have a patio on the main level.
Okay, so there's none where the patio is essentially a deck off this, what would become the second story, if you will?
There are some.
Okay. And so, Brian, just getting to the general density requirements of our comp plan, with the R3, this was like 3.48, and the goal is to be 3.5. So even with these tight, smaller, we're still not technically hitting the plan.
So, yeah.
It's something to wrap my head around essentially.
For, for high-level clarification, right now, Met Council, our 2040 comp plan was three units an acre. As we look to 2050, we have to get to three and a half units per acre. Right now, we're at 3.48. When you talk about wanting increased lot sizes, that takes up more room, which means less houses, less density, which lowers our overall density, which hurts us in the 2050 plan. If we don't meet the sewer requirements, we don't get sewer permits, and we don't extend development. It's a short answer for a lot of technical aspects to say smaller lots aren't always bad.
Good clarification. Thank you.
Other comments, questions, questions?
I would just comment, I mean, you guys have gone through several revisions of this, so thank you for that. I know, like, it feels like the questions here tonight are maybe Lucy pulling the football a little bit when we're talking about, hey, wait a second, this looks too, you know, too many things. I don't think that's the intention. It's probably just the reaction of, whoa, are we overdeveloping our land? So my perspective is I think you guys did a great job and, you know, move on here. So my perspective is I think you guys did a great job and, you know, move on here. Thank you.
I do have a question about the legal matters that were raised. And I just.
Oh, but we just. We don't have our Dana's or our legals not here, so we can't do that.
Yeah, it's, it's really not relevant to our decision tonight. Our, our decision is really just focused on.
Well, that was basically my question. It's really separating the, the proposed development versus how, you know, what might be going on right now. Those are two entirely separate issues, right?
They are, and they're not for us to sort out.
Okay.
Playing Commissioners, as a note too, you are a recommending body. You are not making any decisions tonight.
Right.
Right.
But I just wanted to clarify in terms of where that's going to get addressed versus what we're trying to address here.
Brian, one last question for my own peace of mind. What, do we have a sense of how many units are taking advantage of these drastic deviations from our R1 and R3 standards?
Chair, I do not have an exact number for you based on plans from preliminary plat that I looked at back in June. I'd say maybe a dozen of the single-family homes, taking advantage of, you know, six thousand square feet or less at the most.
Okay. I, I would feel differently if it was across the board, I think. If it's a handful of the units, I maybe am not as bothered by that. But I share the same concern that Commissioner Croft explained, which is that, you know, either we have rules or we don't have rules. And let's, let's try to be as close to those as we possibly can. I know that PUDs allow us flexibility to make some compromises in the name of development and, and other worthy objectives. I just think it would be good to have some, if not bright lines, at least some close to bright lines.
Other comments, questions, quishers? If not, I'll ask for a motion, Brian, if you could put the motion up there again.
Make a motion to recommend the City Council approve the final plat and PUD rezoning for West Creek Village First Edition.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the final plat and PUD rezoning. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Our third and final item for discussion tonight is item three-point-three. Uh, excuse me, I skipped over.
Oh.
Yeah, we have to, we have to go back to the, the West Creek, excuse me, the extension of Downtown West. Let me find that, excuse me. Second item, item three-point-two is to consider preliminary plat, conditional use permit and site plan and building materials review for Downtown West Third Edition. This item also does include a public hearing. So after staff presentation, we'll open the public hearing. And as before, anyone in chambers who wishes to speak on the request will have that opportunity. Again, we'll have a three-minute time limit for that. At this point, I'll turn the podium over to City Planner Brian McCann.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Once again, looking at our major subdivision process, we are at the preliminary plat where we focus on the detailed review of zoning grading utilities, all the big items. So this development, as you may recall, from our last review of the sketch plat a few months ago, back in September, this is a large group of people that has been brought together for this development proposal, including various City of Victoria staff and City Council with the main applicant being Monarch Development, but all the other consultants that you see on the screen here, SW Group, Sante Architects, Confluence, DJR Civil Site Group, Excelsior Bay Partners and Music Can't Group. Just a quick note for the group, you might be looking at this saying, why is this third edition? We never saw a second edition. So just some background, a second edition is coming forward. It's really just a simple lot line adjustment. It won't be going to Planning Commission for review, but that will happen likely before a final plat for Downtown West Third Edition is considered. So just wanted to give you guys a bit of context on that. The lot line adjustment is to move the line between outlots and be shown here to align with our established Tiff district. So for the location and area, these are two city-owned properties, about twelve and a half acres in size. It's located north of Highway Five, south of the Carver Park Reserve, east of some existing businesses such as Dairy Queen and the daycare, east of County Road Eleven, north of Steiger Lake Lane and west of the Downtown West First Edition, which is the Olivine Apartments. So for this preliminary plat being considered this evening, it is for four commercial buildings, two condo townhome buildings, a mixed-use building with the activated Central Public Plaza. So the existing conditions of the site, it's vacant land with rolling hills and some tree coverage. There are utilities available at several points, but they will likely be coming from the extension of Steiger Lake Lane, which is currently under construction. It is also within a thousand feet of Steiger Lake and Lake Auburn, so it does come into Shoreland District. The overall property history, you may recall, we went over this back during the sketch plat as well, but it's been owned by the city since the early two thousands. It's always been envisioned for an extension of our current downtown. So think more retail, restaurants, other commercial, residential. The city did adopt a downtown master plan in 2016. And the first project for that master plan idea was the Downtown West First Edition or the Olivine Apartments, which is currently under construction. After that, a RFP was sent out by the city and Victoria DW LLC, which is here in front of you this evening, was selected. And the sketch plat was presented to the Planning Commission and City Council this past September. So here is an overall image of the proposed development. You'll note that Phase One is really all we're looking at tonight. Phases Two, Three and Four will have to come back for preliminary plat approvals in the future. We're really just highlighting on the areas in green tonight. So what that looks like for the plat, they have the platted lots with the numbers here with future additions noted as outlots. So starting with Lot One, Block One, that is for the two condo townhome buildings totaling forty units for that. And then central to the site is the mixed-use building in green here. That would be nine residential units on the upper levels with some ground floor commercial. Then for the public open space areas, they have Outlet A shown here as well as Outlet F, which is that Central Public Plaza that we discussed before. And then the areas in yellow are the four retail buildings. And the areas in purple are the two parking lots, main public parking lots serving this area. And then the areas in orange are just the public road and public area network. And then lastly, future additions noted in gray. So in our comprehensive plan, this area is guided for downtown mixed-use, which allows development between twenty-four and seventy-five units per acre. It also envisions those commercial uses such as smaller-scale retailer offices and mixed-use developments. For this first phase, they're coming at about twenty-eight units per acre when we're looking at the strictly residential areas. So we're only taking into account the areas for the townhome condo buildings and the mixed-use building. The unit counts for the future phases are unknown, but we're pretty certain those are going to fall within the twenty-four to seventy-five unit per acre range as well. So we ran this by our Metropolitan Council Service Area Representative, and they did not have any concerns regarding sewer permits for this development. So for the zoning, it's currently zoned Central Business District. We do allow mixed-use buildings and other commercial uses as conditional use permits. So that's part of the request in front of you this evening. And then also for retail and restaurants are permitted uses in that district. They, there are not any bulk standards in our Central Business District. We don't have setback requirements. We like buildings built to the lot line. So the only item is for the maximum height of fifty feet. All of the buildings are meeting that standard except for the mixed-use building, which is proposed at fifty-five feet. We do allow an extension in height with a conditional use permit. So that is part of their request this evening as well. For conditional uses, we have a section in code making sure that they meet the general requirements for development such as consistency with the comp plan, that they're adhering to health and safety, compliance with other city standards, they have adequate public infrastructure, they're adequately screening and landscaping based on code requirements. They have the necessary minimum architectural standards. They meet the zoning and they're not generating traffic beyond what would be allowed. So this development is meeting all of the general requirements based on staff's review. And then just as a note, additional CUPs may come forward in the future, depending on the type of commercial users that come in as well as residential amenities. So one you might see is a residential swimming pool. That's a conditional use permit requirement per our code. So if we see any future residential buildings that have a pool, they'll need to come back for an additional CUP. And then for the streets, in the areas in green, they're showing multiple access points along Steiger Lake Lane. They also have a single entry access point from Highway Five as well as a right-in, right-out noted in purple for Highway Five. For the pedestrian connections, they have sidewalks shown extensively throughout the development in blue. They also are showing two trails, one being along Steiger Lake Lane, which is currently under reconstruction, and then the trail connecting to the Highway Five system. Looking at parking, we have two-hundred-and-four parking stalls available with this development for potential commercial and retail and restaurant uses that were noted in the plans. To middles, we estimate parking to be at about two-hundred-and-ten parking stalls. So also noteworthy that they have residential parking underneath the buildings. So that helps the parking count as well. And then downtown area, our downtown area specifically utilizes a shared parking requirement in our code. So we anticipate a lot of these park, parking users to go to multiple uses when they're in this area, not just park and go, park and go. We expect them to park once and stay in the area for a while, do most of their walking down here. For landscaping and tree preservation, they're meeting the minimum requirements for boulevard trees, foundation plantings, and they're also exempt being within the Central Business District. We like our urban development, which typically means very few trees. So as we look at that, for tree preservation, there were a significant number of trees on the site currently. They're removing a lot of them to make this development work. So there is an exception in code for public projects. This being public land, an exception should be considered by the Planning Commission and City Council from our tree preservation requirements so that this area is not oversaturated with trees. And then for the Shoreland Overlay District, as I mentioned earlier, it's within a thousand feet of two lakes. So it's entirely within our Shoreland District. They're meeting the hundred-and-fifty-foot ordinary high-waterline setback for all structures. And the development is coming in at seventy-one percent impervious, which is under our eighty percent requirement. So we did pass these plans along to our DNR area hydrologist. They did not have any concerns with this development for the Shoreland area. And then just a note, any buildings that have four or more residential units within Shoreland have to go through what's called RSPUD process. We did create an exemption in our Shoreland ordinance a few years ago where if you meet the three conditions listed there, you're exempt from the requirement. All the development residential condo townhome buildings and the mixed-use buildings all meet the exemption here. Then for signage, lighting and architecture, we'll look at sign permits more closely with actual building permits that come in for the development. We expect all the buildings to have some, but we didn't note any development signage in the plan. Downtown light poles are also shown in a photometric plan that was provided. They meet our height and illumination requirements, not lamination, illumination, sorry about that. And then all of their buildings seem to meet our Central Business District design standards with building variations, altered roof designs, enhanced exteriors, or enhanced entries in high-quality exterior materials. Those are some big items that we want our downtown to be an elevated experience, have some higher-quality buildings. So they are meeting that with the proposed buildings. This is the mixed-use building, the central one with the fifty-five-foot height with the nine residential condo units on the upper levels. And then these are the four retail, restaurant, commercial buildings that they are showing. All of these renderings were included in the public packet for you as well. Then looking at parkland dedication, their total requirement comes out to be just over one-point-one acres or a hundred-and-sixteen thousand. When we net out the public active plaza, the trails that they're adding, as well as a community center in one of the commercial buildings that takes out point-six-three acres. So they have a remainder of just over point-four-seven or about fifty thousand dollars in parkland dedication that they'll have to account for as well. Then looking at grading and stormwater management, they have to meet the MCWD rules, including wetland impact mitigation. We do anticipate some wetlands being impacted. There is one here that they're showing with the regional stormwater area. So that is being worked through currently with the MCWD. And that is just part of the new regional stormwater system that I've noted on the plan here and in the staff report with some additional coordination review with the city's engineering department and the MCWD as well. And then for the site utilities, as I mentioned, they're proposed to come from the extension of Steiger Lake Lane and connect to existing infrastructure near those businesses on the west. Those will connect to all of the buildings being shown in the plan. And then lastly, this does include a public hearing, similar to the last item. It was posted in the Waconia Patriot on November sixth. We mailed out letters to property owners within three-hundred-and-fifty feet. We did not receive any comments on this, and we also posted it online and at City Hall. With that, I have some standard suggested conditions of approval. One of those being for MinDOT to formally approve the access in the southwest area with Highway Five and that any potential changes in the commercial uses must meet minimum parking requirements. Those are two standards you don't typically see with conditional use permits, but those are ones that staff thought should be incorporated. So with that, staff can stand for any questions you may have, and we have some representatives of the application, the audience as well.
Very good, Brian, thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak to this topic tonight? No? Hearing no additional public input then. Commissioners, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Very good, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries and the public hearing is now closed. Let me now open the floor for the Planning Commission to discuss this proposal. Any questions, comments?
Question, this is for Jen and Brian. When I worked in commercial real estate, sometimes when we developed, we had requirements. We couldn't do retail space until we had commitments. Do we have that here in Victoria? We do not, okay. I guess, think about this, big undertaking. What is our confidence in filling that retail space? Or who am I, ever?
We wouldn't be taking on all this risk without knowing that there's interest in the retail and restaurants. So we are taking our time to get through the approvals here before signing on. And further, the lenders that we sign on or lender will have a requirement for pre-leasing before we commence work on these retail buildings. So our vision right now is, is two restaurants anchoring the buildings that are surrounding the active plaza with patios that help energize that space and then two small shop buildings. So we've had preliminary interest from tenants that we're not disclosing yet that are currently operating in the west metro, including in Downtown Wayzata, Downtown Excelsior, Edina, and then Carver County east of here wanting to come out to Victoria. So we're bullish on it, that's why we're here, that's why we're taking substantial risk on it.
Thank you.
Before you, can we keep him up here for a minute?
Before you, can we keep him up here for a minute? Before you sit down, if you don't mind, could you go through the major hurdles or changes you made to the plan from the sketch to now the preliminary of things that were challenges and you've overcome on this version?
I might ask Matt to come up and speak to some of the challenges we've had on the civil side and stormwater that we've been wrestling with. Parking is something that we have some advancements. We're going to continue making on that between now and final plat, including, you know, conversations that I can't disclose now, but that could add more parking stalls to the count. As well as what I talked about at Sketchplat is in Phase Four, adding covered parking there if we determine we need additional parking, you know, because we don't know yet who the exact, for example, restaurants are. We're talking to a breakfast restaurant operator. If we sign a breakfast restaurant operator, their peak time is mornings, of course. It's not the same time at night when everyone else is there for evenings. So it's a little early on the parking side. But in terms of what's evolved since we were here last time, I maybe Matt might be helpful on that front.
Thanks for addressing the parking, by the way, I have another question.
Planning commission members, my name is Matt Pavick, civil engineer on the project with Civil Site Group. Most of the changes that have occurred since Sketchplat are mostly just technical challenges. You know, figuring out stormwater, working with the watershed, coordinating with the city on Steiger Lake Lane and all those improvements, how those fold into our design. The layout and the general project are the same. So it's just really working through all those technical details.
Got it. What is the, can you describe the loop, the half-moon on the top of Phase One? And it looks like kind of an S, it looks like it goes underneath the road. Like, how does that all, how does that work? Can you explain that?
Yes, that is a drop-off location for guests of that building. And it's just at surface grade, I can like Carl.
Is all of, are all these roads at surface grade? There's no over-under, nothing, right?
No.
Okay.
We're creating a marketing rendering for that. So the, there's a front lobby to those two counter buildings, two different lobbies. And then there's a drop-off, so we're making it a great sense of arrival if you're someone that's visiting or if you're getting picked up.
Where the limo drops you off.
Exactly, right, yeah, right. And that's right there. And then if you're walking into the restaurants and retail, and we're creating sidewalks, of course, with different options to head that direction was the intent there, so.
I'm sorry, I'm monopolizing here, but there was a trail I saw on the top edge of that that went around. It was yellow, do you have that? Is that, what does that connect to on the city, the east?
Chair and commissioners, that trail goes further down Steiger Lake Lane, which is currently under construction, will actually result in a direct connection to the Lake Minnetonka Regional Trail.
So the question was because it looks like there, I think there's eight crosses there for that trail, drive crosses, and on the other side of the road, I think there's only three. So I guess the question would be, I understand that you want the traffic to be drawn into what's going to be in Plan B, C, and D, or two, three, and four, but is it safer to be on the side with less stuff, or is it even possible? I don't know, I don't know. Just an observation, I saw those roads it's crossing.
Yeah, I could add a little bit context. So the trail location on the south side of Steiger is an extension from where it is located already to the east. So we're just continuing that on that side of the road. That's the first step of that decision. There's a sidewalk on the north side, so there's parallel paths to take down the road, whether you're walking or biking, because at the west end of the roundabout, there are, again, multiple connection points to sidewalk and trail. So flip-flopping it would be, you'd have to cross the road further to the east to reconnect to the trail at the south side. So we just felt that kind of the continuous trail staying on that side of the road made the most sense. We also have a trail connection that heads through the retail and down along Highway five and loops around, connects to the, that's part of the Highway five, Conroy Road 11 improvements and the roundabout. So there's a, you know, multiple ways to take that trail and connect to the regional trail.
As long as we're on that, staff had expressed some concerns about that trail, and I can't imagine it's enjoyable walking right next to Highway five. What is the status of that? Maybe, Brian, you can update us on that.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, the previous concerns that we had where they were showing the trail going behind, or we had considered the option of the trail going behind the buildings, but with the traffic coming in directly off of Highway five, placing it closer to Highway five didn't seem reasonable from a safety concern, as well as placing it next to this retaining wall that's shown here would be a significant grading challenge. So city staff are comfortable with the current location of the trail.
Okay, well, how much will run parallel to Highway five? Is that just a, is that a spur, or what is that? Does it come to an end there?
Yeah, so there is a trail here with part of the Highway five project, and this would just connect to that and bring it to the Steiger Lake Lane trail.
Okay, very good. On parking, we spent a lot of time at the Sketchplat phase, talking about parking, and it's always in short supply in Victoria, and I suspect this will be no different. Is there any update that you can share at this point on?
Just mainly the update I just had for Commissioner Croft regarding that we're working on that still between now, we're just short. But what also is not known yet is exactly, for example, who the restaurants are. One of the restaurants we're talking to is a breakfast focus group, but dramatically changes the balance of demand, of peak demand at nights and weekends. But we're also looking, as I mentioned, about the future phase having covered parking below the multifamily building. That would be a future Phase Three or Four that would drive at-grade right into covered parking. And then the multifamily buildings above that is a concept that we've continued to look at here. Because by then, we'll know exactly the demands of the site as well in terms of the retail that's in there.
Yeah, it's, it's like changing the tire on a bus as it's moving down the road. And that's, I'm glad that it's added as a condition to the recommended motion, because I think that's going to be a critical issue for this development.
Yeah, and we think most people are just observing that Victoria prefers surface parking, not structured parking. And so our first goal is finding more surface parking, at which we're continuing to study that, as well as there's other conversations happening that I can't disclose that that would include some additional stalls to add to this count in that way, so.
And what are the, like, the thinking of the phases? You said that was part of Phase Four, one covered. So how many years between this is your natural progression? If you could proceed at?
If we could add a perfect crystal ball on progression, it'd be within five to seven years that it would entirely be built out, because we need to pre-sell condos before we start vertical on the condos. And we're offering condos, because there are no condos available in downtown Victoria, most communities. It's mostly rental housing, and so there is demand for condos. We want to see that absorbed, build it, and build the next Phase Two, which is more condos on the upper right side there, looking right at Steiger Lake. And then Phase Three and Four, we're proposing a mix of condos and apartments. You know, and that there's a lot of apartments to absorb in town right now between Olivine and the Row Project, which has not absorbed yet as well. And there's also the Amir Project, which is stalled, and I'm not sure if that's ever going to get built, but that's near here as well, that's a 55-plus rental product. So that's our intention with the phasing plan, but our goal has always been, which is aligned with cities, is to build the new Main Street first to set the tone for the entire project, which is an important thing for future residents here in the city.
Thank you.
Question, has there been any thoughts as to, like, when semi-trucks need to get in and out of this area for food delivery, moving people in and out of condos? Is there a discussion?
Yes, so along the retail area, we can start there with access for loading. We're designing kind of a woo-nurf through that location where deliveries can come with box trucks, pick-up garbage, you know, things like that through that location. And then a lot, you know, the retail, or excuse me, the residential buildings are accessed through the basements. So there'll be, you know, trash pickup and other things will happen along the road, and it'll be brought out on the specific day.
One more, just clarifying, I think I'm seeing it, so in the, kind of the retail restaurant areas where the squares are, that's going to be pedestrian walk, walking, not road, correct? Yeah, awesome.
Yes.
Cool.
One more question, I don't know to whom I should direct it, maybe to staff. I know that the plan calls for essentially 100% tree removal. And I don't know if a tree inventory has been done on this area, or whether there are any heritage trees, but while the city council has the authority to approve exceptions, their charge under the code is to approve the minimum deviation required to accomplish the development. I don't know if you've looked at that, but my input would be to take a hard look at whether you can preserve heritage trees, because I think that would really add to the development and continue to preserve the charm of downtown Victoria. I think that's an important part, the nature is an important part of our community, and I think that's really something to look at.
We agree about that statement. And we should do an inventory of how many trees are in our landscape plan. I don't know if you did, Brian, but I know it's in the multiple, it's in the hundreds, you know, in terms of what we're planting. Because we know for people that want to shop and dine here and live here, you need trees, and you're surrounded by the park reserve, which is full of trees. So we agree that nature is really important to integrate into the design, which it has been. But it does require a clean slate, though, to build an urban setting, like you said in your staff report, so.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
Well, last one for Brendan Jen, can you go back to like the overall plan one? Ask a silly question. Has the city explored those last two lots of the west? Like, there's no chance you guys can get the daycare and Dairy Queen land to, like, make the site bigger?
It's something that's being contested, but there aren't any plans yet to incorporate those parcels into this development.
And I could say that we, as the selected developers, have been in discussions with both those property owners. I can't disclose anything right now at this point, so.
Fair enough, sounds like combos are happening.
One last question?
Sure.
The Highway five, have you had conversations with MINDOT at this point?
Yes, Chair.
Are they okay with that, or?
Chair and planning commissioners, we haven't received a formal approval from them yet, but the direction is leaning towards yes, we will get that intersection approved. I did note it as a condition of approval in the resolution, just as a safe guarantee as well.
I'm just surprised that they're going to allow egress and ingress, basically three points if you include the roundabout, in such close proximity there. But it just seems to be adding, asking for congestion and bumper tapping, maybe not tapping. And do we know whether we're going to change the speed limit? As you go down the hill, it go, it's pretty, pretty close as you start down the hill, it goes to 50?
On Highway five, you mean? It's a state highway, we don't have jurisdiction over the speed limits, and those are set by state statutes, so they'll likely comply with whatever the requirement is per statute for this roadway segment.
So the state decides whether the 35 ends and the 50 starts?
Correct.
Okay.
They're, they're rules, I guess. Other comments, questions? If not, Brian, if you could put up the sample motion. Commissioners, I would like to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend the city council approve the preliminary plan conditional use permits and site plan and building materials requests for downtown west third edition.
Thank you, Eric, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Now, our third and final agenda item for discussion tonight is item 3.3, discuss the proposed zoning code Article Six. We return to our year-long adventure of going through the zoning code, and I'll now turn it over to Associate Planner Travis Brierley for a staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair, Commission. Tonight is the next part of the proposed zoning ordinance, part of the overall review that we've been going through for the past several months. Just quick background, this whole process started, just as a reminder, because during staff review, we found about 500 items or so that needed some better consideration throughout our code. And we did some more immediate addressment of amendments, including business district CIPs, aside ordinance, which we're looking at tonight, so a couple of small changes for tonight, as well as fence ordinances. The whole goal of going through this process is to make sure that we continue to be transparent. We continue especially as staff to be available to answer any questions from the public, as well as the commission or city council members, to be flexible with the process. The initial setup was to try to get it down a little bit quicker than it is now, and that's part of that flexibility that we're going with. Also with updates in conjunction with the municipal code review and potential updated language in that process, which we will see tonight, a direct correlation between those. Ultimately looking to unite the municipal and zoning code for recodification next year. Just looking at the overall process that we're looking at, it's to review the simple, or do a quick review and then a full review, move things around as we need to, and then to make sure as part of staying transparent, that anything brought forward to the planning commission, there's a red line version that is saved, that we can all take a look at to make sure that we stay on track with where we're going, as well as make sure that any comments the planning commission have transfer to the city council in their entirety. We are on Article Six for the review tonight, which is signs, we only have two more to go. Super exciting stuff, at least for me. With the signs ordinance, we're looking at the first part that we looked at as a finding, purpose, and intent. There's a lot of things on the screen, but the biggest thing that we're looking at is regulations of time, place, and manner of signs in the city. This is mainly to maintain, enhance, and improve the aesthetic environment of the community, as well as make sure that we're not creating, or not allowing situations which could create hazards or other negative or adverse impacts within the community. There are many signs which do not need a permit to go up, though we do require it for others. Mainly, these are temporary displays, flags, public signs, directional signs, construction signs, and then other things that are signs that are created by any type of contract or direction by the city, such as when we do different types of projects, or when we put up, say, a no-parking sign or something like that. During the sign ordinance, we lay out a comprehensive sign review, so it's similar to what we do with conditional use permits or with variances or PUDs. We have a process that we need to look at as a planning commission to provide that recommendation to city council. And we lay it out, for the most part, we're going to be looking at comprehensive sign reviews for commercial properties, as well as multi-story properties, dynamic displays, and illuminated signs, dynamic displays or backlit signs, illuminated, have light projected on them to show up. And then any property which is going to be at least five acres, multiple commercial buildings, when you think of that type of stuff, that's more of your business park. So that'd be Victoria's southern growth area of town in that C2 district would be one of those areas to look at. And then properties under construction or development, which include what we took a look at tonight with West Creek Village, as well as downtown west, as well as murals. We do have different sign standards that are put in place. We want to make sure signs are prohibited from creating obstructions and hazards. They're not in the right way unless they are government signs. Freestanding signs have a setback of 25 feet. Main reason for that is they fall over, we don't want them landing on a building or in the street or creating some other type of hazard, more than what a sign falling over would create on its own. We also want to make sure that freestanding signs are not on properties without a principal structure. So if you were to redevelop a property, you can't just leave the sign on the property. It's similar to what we would expect with accessory structures on residential properties. Scoreboards is a big thing, that requires conditional use permit. We went through that with Holy Family last year. Dynamic sign setbacks, as well as light emission regulations, illumination signs. Big thing looking at that is safety and enjoyment. If you have light shining onto properties, create a distraction because of a sign that's consistently there. I would think that's a little bit of a nuisance, so that's one of the things, pretty common language. Yes, Commissioner?
You know, when they're building that scoreboard?
Commissioner, I'd be more than happy to talk to you after the meeting about. We also look campaign signs, one thing about campaign signs, they're regulated by state statute. There's very specific rules to it. Honestly, we just mimicked what the rules were and cited to it. As long as they don't create a hazard, they're probably not going to get touched. Any complaints like that, we'd handle through the Secretary of State's office. Any complaints like that, we'd handle through the Secretary of State's office. We're also, we also have regulations, two-sided signs, religious signs, audience, as well as billboards. Neat part about billboards is billboards can only be constructed on city property. That's mainly done so the city has a greater control over what that would look like, as well as it could be a potential revenue source for the city in the long term. We got temporary portable signs to kind of break it out a little bit. We got real estate signs, but that's referring to is typically what you'll see in the front yard of a home that's for sale. The regulations that we have allow for that standard size to be created, but nothing large and obnoxious. Development signs, that'd be if you go down Quachia, they got the Lennar sign. If you go down Victoria Drive, they got the, the Hunter's Brook and the Marsh Hollow sign out there. Those are those development signs. Making sure those are placed in a way that's safe, but also provides some flexibility for the developer to fill the properties which they've created. Garage and yard sale signs, basically, you put them up, when you're done with the, with the yard sale, garage sale, get them down. So we don't really, we don't require any type of permit for that, but it's a way that we have the ability to go out and we can say, as city, hey, this sign shouldn't be there. The garage sale was two weeks ago. We can, we can pick it up and keep our streets looking clean. Temporary signs and banners, a lot of those, a good example would be the, the side flags that you could put up, grand opening, or, or they've got a furniture sale or something like that. We see those all over. It's limited in the si, the total size, as well as how long they can be out there. It's limited for 30 days. It's temporary. It should be for something specific. And then portable signs, when we think of portable signs, you know, like the, the A-frame sandwich signs that would go out in front of, if Vicks wanted to put up a sign that said, here's today's special or whatever, they'd be able to put it up, and it regulates to allow them to do that, but also make sure that there's safe passage for pedestrians. Yes, Commissioner?
I don't remember if we discussed this, Travis, when we looked at it previously. Some of the communities around here, I don't know if they put it in the regulations, or if it's just like a handshake agreement. They have, like, all the same open signs, and I know as we're talking about expanding our business districts, is that something that's included in our sign ordinance?
Commissioner, that's your question, just for clarifications. When they, when you say an open sign, you mean it's the same design of the sign?
Yeah, it's all like the same, like, size, length, color.
Our commi, our, our code would not address something like that, because that gets in kind of a gray area when you talk First Amendment. It depends on what attorney you talk to, depends on what they're going to say, but we want to always play on the cautious side. We're only, we're going to look at the time, the place, and the manner, not necessarily the design or the language. The only language that we would ever take a look at would be campaign signs that are regulated directly under state statute. We allow Secretary of State's office to deal with that, or, or if it falls underneath an obscenity, which is also regulated very specifically under state statute, at that point, we would consult with the city attorney before taking an action. But as far as looking at how large an open sign could be, that could be a regulation, but regulating its color, or regulating what language it's in, or how it's spelled, or, or anything like that, that's something that we wouldn't do.
Yeah, and maybe it's a comment for Jen to think about, you know, you, you visit those communities and you can tell that the business districts are more tied together by having that type of signage more consistent amongst businesses like that. So as, I think, as we grow, you know, in the next five, 10 years, whatever that, how long that's going to take, if it's not in here, maybe it's something worth thinking about to just create a more inviting, it just makes it look, I don't know, this is not the right verb, but it just makes it look better. I don't know the right word to say it.
And Commissioner, when we went through the sign ordinance last summer, and then the last fall, when we had it go up for adoption, those are things that were discussed.
Yeah.
At the time.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it gets into that gray area where we were, depending on who you asked, there could be an infringement.
Totally.
So that's one of the reasons that we decided against going down that direction. One of the things that we do look at is trying to limit size of the signs and the type of display, or how far they're going to be off buildings. So that way, excuse me, that way, when you do have type of new development, you try to get the same style of signage, but you try, you got it, you can only do it through the manner in which it's attached to the size. That, but, that is an excellent point. I just want to.
No, that's fine. Yeah, it sounds like it's been crossed, and that's fine.
Move forward. In residential districts, we have a prohibition against freestanding monument signs. Residential property should have, and this is mainly for single-family homes. If it's a single-family home, it should look like a single-family home. If you're operating, say, your own bakery out of there underneath state regulation or something like that, at that point, you could put up a small sign, but nothing that would say, this is a business, not a home. Illuminated signs are prohibited, except with accent lights, so that's basically saying, if you want to put a sign to say what your address is, or home of the Smiths, and you want to put it out front, you'd be allowed to do that, but you wouldn't be able to put a light that projects on it, which would cause discomfort with the neighbors. So you could use accent lighting on the side of your home, which is already currently allowed. You look at neighborhood signs that are permitted, that's going to be anything when you drive into neighborhoods, whether it's Lake Town, Lake Bridge, Marsh Hollow, Brookmore, or wherever you go, that's that type of stuff. And then multi-tenant building sign regulations, we want to allow for anything such, even if it's a duplex, or if it goes all the way to multifamily, being four or more units. We want to make sure there's a functionality in there where they're still able to say, hey, this is a home, it's a community, but not to such a point where it's a, it's a large item right next to single-family dwellings. In our business district, we have regulations for freestanding signs, wall signs, flags, window signs. Windows are basically, any, like, when you put the acrylic on there, so hours of operation, Dr. Stevens Dentistry or what have you, open Monday through Friday, that's, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about window signs. We're not talking about the bright neon painted signs you might see at, like, Pizza Man or some of those type places. We also have regulations for multi-tenant buildings, advertising devices. Basically, if you want to put the flailie arm guy in front of your business, that'd be something that'd be prohibited. So that's where you'd find that type of prohibition. A lot of that is to keep things simple and, and to make sure that we have a good aesthetic feel to the community, especially in our business districts. Banners, same thing, they're temporary. We do have some banners in town that are being used as permanent signs. Basically, what these regulations do is, if those were ever to be replaced, they would have to conform within the 30 days or become a permanent sign, so that helps with long-term growth on that, improvements. Traffic and safety signs are exempt. We do have a lot of signs, especially in our current downtown, which some of them look like they're inconvenient, but there's a reason they're placed where they are, as well as professional occupation signs. Sign maintenance is another item. Maintenance is required. You have to maintain the sign in a good condition. One of the things that we looked at removing from the code was having a penalty for signs and things that you're having signs of poor condition. What, that's going to fall underneath is it'll fall underneath this maintenance requirement that moves forward and would be actually regulated through, for any type of penalty would be regulated through our nuisance code. That would allow the city to do abatement if it was needed, or if a sign was creating a hazard, and it would be a case by case, but it's just another tool that would be available. So looking at tying into our zoning code, tying into the municipal code, this regu, or the purpose behind tonight presenting the, it being moved is because of proposed languages in the nuisance code, which hasn't been brought forward publicly yet, but there's still that time, because we want to make sure we have a balanced city code in its entirety. The other thing that we look, that we have is non-conforming signs. There's 60 days compliance when there's change in ownership. Mainly for that is that when you do have a change in ownership, if the business doesn't take off, it could be an abandonment, or there could be a change to the design of the sign, or, or other issues that would need to be addressed. This would provide the city with some type of ability to go in and help address those type of issues. Painted wall signs, as well as painted window signs are, they're prohibited. Marquee signs, same thing. Any sign that's not specifically stated as permitted within our districts would be strictly prohibited. And then any sign that was installed, regardless of their status, prior to the, the recent sign ordinance being adopted, which was of October of last year, we're going to look at that and look at it as a non, as illegal nonconformity, just because it, it makes life a little bit easier and doesn't cause as many problems for the property owners to have those signs. When we start talking about the appeal of enforcement, which I touched on earlier, we removed that from the current sign language. We have a general statement of appeal for administrative decisions, because many of these decisions are done at the staff level. That type of criteria is in statute, it's also within Article Two of the proposed zoning code that we looked at earlier this year. Planning commission review guidelines, when we're looking specifically at signs or any type of decision that was made, that's regulated under the proposed Article One of the new zoning code. And then the enforcement of the violations, there is a general penalty statement within Article Two of the proposed zoning regulations. Those are prob, those are the biggest, there, those are the only things that changed in the current language that we have, which was looked at last year to now, just getting rid of those last two sections, because they get addressed in other ways, your appeal and your enforcement. So with that, at the next planning commission meeting, we'd be looking at alternative energy systems. Those can be your ground pumps, your wind, your windmills, things like that, solar panels. And then we just have antennas and towers, and that would be the entire zoning code. We want to make sure we get through everything. I do want to remind planning commissioners, everybody does have access to a folder that's on the city shared drive, which has all our redline versions of everything we've discussed, as well as tracking documents and any staff reports that have been preliminary created. That way, there can be some review, and we're more than happy to answer any questions anybody has prior to any meeting. With that, I stand for any questions on sign ordinances or the process in general?
Thank you, Travis. Very clear. Commissioners, any questions, comments, discussion?
One question. I know we had discussed with the quick trip with their signage of the changing, can we just make that a standard throughout all of the code of, like, signs can't change after, like, if it's a movable one, it can't change after, like, 9:00 PM or 11:00 PM, whatever we had discussed?
Commissioner, that is something that could be done. That would be underneath the dynamic displays. It, it's definitely something that, that could be done if the commissioner would like to. I do want to point out that those types of signs are generally not next to residential areas. And it does, if, if it has to be a static sign, that could be a deterrent from businesses wanting to put up those type of displays. But if the, if the commission would like to discuss, I'd be more than happy to go through some pros and cons, and then I can always look to see if there's some language out there. I do know that sign, dynamic display signs do have limitations in how fast they can change their sign. There's a minimum set period that's regulated by the, by federal regulations, at least for billboards along 494, because that's my experience. But I would imagine there would be similar regulations in there. But I'd be more than happy to talk to you about what those concerns are offline.
Yeah.
And then we can look at some alternative solutions and see if there's something to bring back to the planning commission in the future.
Very good.
I'll just comment, I appreciate the summary nature of the presentation and taking the, taking the commission through in this, in this way was effective and efficient. Good job.
Very good. Thanks. Agreed. All right. Commissioners, hearing no more discussion, this item doesn't require a formal motion. So that concludes our discussion items. Moving on to the miscellaneous section of our agenda then. Staff, any miscellaneous?
Yes, thank you, Chair. First off, it's been, I think, a month and a half since our last meeting, so I think we have some new artwork in here. If you all want to take a look and take a vote for your favorite, I didn't distribute sheets for everyone, but they are available at the front table. Secondly, Travis noted the alternative energy system ordinance going to our next meeting, that will be December 2nd. We also have a preliminary plat proposal for the Ganon Monarch Development Property, the Victoria Condos. So we will have that, that evening as well. And then we have Light Up Victoria that following Thursday, December 4th, so bring your families, it's a great time. I'll be there with my own. And then lastly, just a happy Thanksgiving to everyone, which is next Thursday.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, any miscellaneous items? If not, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion, and?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We are adjourned.